Good evening, good evening, and thank you everyone for attending. The time is seven o'clock and we're going to kick off our meeting tonight. And Deb, would you kindly do roll call?
Counselor Williams, Counselor Hantsey, Counselor Perser, Counselor Parrish, Counselor Downs, Counselor Miller.
Great, thank you. I'm going to ask that everybody stand for a moment of silence to collect your thoughts, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
My Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, we have an agenda put forth before us. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Great. With that, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented. Second.
Great, we have a first and a second.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Hantsey.
Yes.
Counselor Perser. Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Counselor Downs. And Counselor Miller. Motion passes six zero.
Great, thank you. Tonight, we have two proclamations on the agenda. The first one is for Crime Stoppers. And Rich, would you be so kind as to read?
I'd be more than happy to do that. Whereas crime is a menace to our society, it tears apart lives and causes feelings of fear, anger, and helplessness. As caring citizens, we are obligated to do everything in our power to ensure that our communities are not victimized by criminals. And whereas the Crime Stoppers of Mesa County Program has empowered the citizens of Mesa County to take a stand against crime, this program brings together citizens, law enforcement, the media businesses, and educational institutions to combat crime and make our community safer. And whereas combining the media awareness, cash rewards, anonymous phone tip line, and P3 tips app for citizens to contact, Crime Stoppers of Mesa County has created an effective method for solving crimes and helping citizens take back control over their neighborhoods. And whereas the award-winning nationally-recognized Crime Stoppers of Mesa County has been particularly effective since 1983, has received over 23,200 tips, which have led to 1,857 arrests and the recovery of over $9,220,000 in drugs and property. Anonymous Crime Stopper callers have been rewarded 316,500 for their valuable information. And whereas Crime Stoppers of Mesa County has forged strong working relationships with all area law enforcement agencies, including Colorado State Patrol, Fruta Police Department, Grand Junction Police Department, Mesa County Sheriff's Office, Mesa County District Attorney's Office, and the Palisade Police Department. And whereas Crime Stoppers of Mesa County is working to increase awareness of community safety issues and crime prevention efforts, while also giving back to our community by offering grants to various organizations, partnership with Colorado Mesa University, and scholarships to law enforcement graduates. Now, therefore, in official recognition, we, the undersigned, do hereby proclaim January 2025 as National Crime Stoppers Month in the city of Fruta and call on all citizens to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent crime, thereby strengthening communities in which we live.
Great, thank you. In my understanding, there are board members here. Except, please come on up. Is somebody gonna? That'd be great, thank you.
My name is Sheri Zen. This is Deb Mosier and Sonya Ruby. We all serve as board members on our Crime Stoppers. And how appropriate that our board member of 40 years, Rich Parrish, read our proclamation this year. We're so proud to have had him through the years. And we're just so appreciative that you support us, as does Chief Kraus and his staff, because we do work with all law enforcement in the valley. And I think that's what kept us going. We're on our 42nd or 3rd year being here and we're still solving crime. And we try to find other ways that we can help our community, especially when we're now giving scholarships to those that are going into law enforcement. I mean, that particularly warms my heart as previous law enforcement, because it's tough times for law enforcement and I'm grateful that folks are still going into that profession. So thank you for your support. Thank you for acknowledging Crime Stoppers. And I've never seen so many people at one of your meetings. Maybe it's because of Crime Stoppers, I don't know. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Quiet group.
Yeah, they don't get off that easy.
Great group. Forty years on the board.
Yes.
That's impressive. That's very, very impressive.
Thirty-five though, Rich.
They manage that, right?
All right, we have our second proclamation, which Aaron will read, proclaiming Monday, January 20, 2025, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the city of Fruta. Aaron?
Whereas that all people, regardless of the color of their skin, the persuasion of their theology, or the level of their intelligence, were built by the one Creator with one blood, designed and fashioned to live on one earth and with one another. And whereas Martin Luther King Jr. was a minister who dedicated his life for the purpose so we may, as Americans, truly live out the Declaration of Independence as we hold those truths to be self-evident, that all people were created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. And whereas the third Monday of each January be acknowledged as Martin Luther King Jr. Day by the city of Fruta as a city holiday and a day to acknowledge a great American who awakened a nation's conscience to not judge a person by the color of their skin, but by the content of their heart. And whereas every year in the week leading to the Martin Luther King Day, several events are held within the Grand Valley communities to not only honor Martin Luther King Jr., but to also educate and build stronger ties. And whereas in cooperation with the city of Grand Junction and Mesa University, several events are planned to commemorate Martin Luther King Day on January 20. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fruta City Council does hereby proclaim Monday, January 20, 2025, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
Great, thank you, Aaron. And I think I saw David come in. David, would you kindly come up, say a few words, and accept this proclamation?
First of all, I want to say that this is like the, we've been coming out and listening to this proclamation being read for maybe five to 10 years now, and this is the largest crowd, similar to the statement that Crime Stoppers made that I've seen, and I'm really glad to see it. It's really ironic that this year's theme is Tough Minds and Tender Hearts. And it looks like there's going to be some tough minds and tender hearts here tonight. But on a serious note, we always want to thank you for this recognition. You're one of the smaller entities in the valley and you provide some of the major support for us. As you've indicated from reading the proclamation, there are multiple events that take place. And what we attempt to do during the celebration is to literally have a message for kids from the age of two or three up to adults. We have a couple of readings that take place at the Central Library and also the Clinton Library. And basically what they are, therefore, those little ones whose parents will bring them so they can hear just some really basic information about Martin Luther King, what he stood for, and what he continues to stand for in all of our hearts. The other events that we have, probably what we're kicking it off with is an event that, and it's a movie at the Avalon Theater, which will be on Saturday. It's very inexpensive and it's the movie about the history of Jackie Robinson. It's called Forty-two. His baseball number was number forty-two. And it covers his life from the time that he went to, a lot of people don't realize that he was actually a college student. He went to USC and then he also entered the military. He comes out of the military and he plays baseball. And he basically broke the color barrier, which was, at the time, was something that was pretty outstanding because he could not even stay in the same hotel as his teammates. So it's really potent for our times. And it really ties into our Tough Mind Tender Hearts theme. As we move into 2025, I think that's something that we're all going to have to have because where we are right now, not only in our geographic area, but in our hearts, it's going to take some very tough minds and some very tender hearts. Some of the other events that we have, we have the readings at the libraries. On Friday, the 18th, we're having black trivia. And a lot of people will say, well, what do you mean, black trivia? There's a lot of black history and some of it's very trivial in terms of who can tell me the inventor of the potato chip? Very trivial, and it's something that we probably all have consumed, but it was an African-American who was a cook in New York. A railroad baron came in, it was Lake Placid, New York. We all have heard of Lake Placid because that's where they hold the Olympics. But a railroad baron came in and he wanted potatoes. He wanted fried potatoes. The cook brought him potatoes. He said, "These are tasteless and they're soggy." So the cook thought, okay, I'm going to show him something. I am going to fry the, excuse my French, the heck out of these. And so he did it, and then he said, "I am going to salt them like they were from the salt of the earth." He did it. They were enjoyed, and that was the beginning of the potato chip. So if that's trivia, you can say you owe it to me because you got it right. So that's going to be our Friday event. And then Saturday, what we have is a, it's just a little gathering that we do for individuals that want to come and celebrate with us. Sunday, we have an interfaith coalition service, and it's going to be at Quanania at 6:30 PM on Sunday. And then Monday is our big celebration. We start out downtown, Grand Junction, and we have individuals from the town of Fruta, town of Palisade, City Hall, I mean, City of Grand Junction Councilman, and also Mesa County Commissioner that will read another proclamation. We'll have some awards there. Then we have a symbolic march that starts downtown and we will march to CMU campus and we have an award ceremony there. So what we try to do is, we have these events and we try to make them available. We know that people are working. We know that there are other things. But it's just a day that we want you to celebrate. And we always say, don't make that day a day off. Make it a day where you are on, that you do something for someone else. And it's something that Dr. Martin Luther King would want you to do. So again, I want to thank you for making this proclamation. And the other thing is making it public and making it a part of your record. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. As always, let me just see, your French is better than mine.
And, but wait, there's more. I'm going to leave. These are basically our poster, postcard-sized posters. So they have all of our events, and I'll leave them at the back of the room so you can pick them up on your way out.
Thank you, David. All right. Next up, we have our public participation. This section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda or that are on the consent agenda. The consent agenda or items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council for final actions. I know we have a large group tonight, which is great. I do want to point out a couple items. The section for Excel is on the administrative agenda, so there will not be an opportunity to talk at that time. If you're here and wish to talk about something on the Excel, now would be the time to do it. I know we have a lot of people here. I know there was a sign-up sheet. If you didn't get your name on the sign-up sheet, don't worry. You will still have the opportunity to speak. We want to make sure everybody gets heard. With that, and we want to open up the floor. And I know we have some names on the list. If you want to start calling them off, and once again, we'll make sure everybody has the opportunity.
Andrew Armstrong. Okay.
So once again, during that part, there will not be an opportunity to speak. And I forgot to ask that when you do come up, please state your full name and address. And you'll have three minutes.
Daniel Emery.
Daniel Emery, 930 Squire Court. That's here in Fruta. I'd like to thank you all for listening to me. I think this is the third time I've come up to chat with you, and I appreciate the input you give. I certainly wish I had the opportunity to provide input sooner in this process because again, I think the decision that we did reach is, although it's better than the other option of hanging all the power lines, I certainly do not think it's the best option out there. Frankly, Excel is simply trying to put these power lines in as cheaply as they can. They appear to have no interest in investing in Fruta to make a better future. We all know that underground power lines are far safer, are far better. And although Excel says that it would cost somewhere upwards of a million dollars, I think most people understand that's a highly inflated number. The risks that are associated with the above-ground line, especially putting it where your citizens recreate, is just silly. Excel trying to do this is simply looking to line their pockets at the expense of the city of Fruta. We all know that the cost, even if it was the full $11 million, wouldn't even be a rounding error on their quarterly budget. Not their yearly budget, their quarterly budget. They have the resources to do this. Do hope that city council does not capitulate to Excel and allow them to suspend the lines. It would significantly decrease the value of my home as I overlook Riverfront Park. And as I said before, I never would have bought the property knowing that could be a possibility. Again, I thank you very much for your time, and I certainly hope you vote to protect Fruta.
Thank you.
Next, Tessa Bynum. And Jerry Holm. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Once again, even though you didn't put your name on the list, if there's something you'd like to speak, now would be the time. Also, just to reiterate, we will be going into, after a council meeting, into executive session, and there will not be time at that either. So want to speak, now's the time. So if...
Good evening, Mayor Bremen and city council members. My name is Paul Schultz from Red Rock Subdivision in Fruta. And I'm here to urge you to immediately stop the condemnation of private property at Beto's Reminis Farm and to end the city's effort to force out family farms east of Fruta. These farms are vital to Fruta's agricultural heritage and to our community. The expansion of 19 Road is unjustified and based on improper and aggressive right-of-way acquisition practices. We support appropriately upgrading roads, but Fruta's 19 Road expansion is excessive. 19 Road is a major collector. It is not a major artillery requiring 80 to 100 feet of right-of-way. Traffic counts do not support the proposed road expansion. And Fruta's planning relies on aspirational future road classifications and outdated thinking disregarding modern transportation trends that require less roadway, not more. Fruta claims to support local agriculture and farmers' right to farm, but these actions contradict those promises. The threat of condemnation of private property at Beto's Reminis Farm threatens the agricultural identity of Fruta, undermines public trust, and prioritizes unnecessary development over community values. I urge you to act now. Stop the condemnation of private property at Beto's Reminis Farm, protect the farms that sustain Fruta's economy and character, and commit to transparency and collaboration with property owners and the broader community. Let Fruta be a leader in preserving farmland, not destroying it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak before we close public participation? Great, please come on up.
Hi, good evening. My name is Shelby Beto. And I live in unincorporated Mesa County with my husband on 19 Road, where we own and operate that farm he was just talking about, Beto's Reminis Farms. We have that farm. We serve over 200 members in Mesa County, along with members in Delta and Montrose County. We've been part of the Fruta community for over 18 years. I'm here tonight to ask city council to stop the threat of condemnation on our property. The 20-foot right-of-way the city wants for 19 Road expansion, it is excessive, and it undermines the Right to Farm Act and breaks promises to support local agriculture. Fruta could be a leader in preserving its agricultural land and preserving its agricultural identity instead of pushing forced growth on the community and making farmers and ranchers feel like they are being pushed aside. It's not only hurting its agricultural community, but the Fruta community as a whole, for those that want to shop local and know where their food's coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, I'm going to ask if anybody else would like to speak before we close public participation?
October 16th, something like that?
You could, for the record though, please state your name and address?
Daniel Haney. 1868 J Road, just down the road from 19. I bought because of the ag area. My home is actually zoned ag, as long as I fight for it. I'm only three acres, but I'm still ag. And I bought because we are not a subdivision. I want to help the farm. There's no reason to make that area. There's other areas of Fruta if you want to build houses, but over there in that area, there's no need. And if you want revenue, put a police officer on J Road between seven and eight when the teachers are going into the school. Because I live right there, and it's not the kids, it's the teachers. So, but please, let's keep our ag and keep our farm. It's been around a long time. It's a beautiful area. Let's not destroy it with a bunch of cookie cutter homes or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, sir, come on up and state your name and address, please.
I'm A.J. Armstrong, 1870 J and 6th Tenth Road. I live just a little north of the Beto's and I drive by there every day, every day. We've been here for 18 years. My wife's property. Our house has been here 18 years on J and 6th Tenth Road. The property was bought in the 90s by my wife through the loss of her dad. And she got this property, Judge Buss looked out for her with Mesa County and made sure that she got a good piece of property that would be beneficial for her future in every way, be it retirement, a nice home, a good farm. And now, all of the work and effort that we put into it, several thousands of dollars putting in irrigation, which is going to have to be ripped out with this new expansion, new ditches relocated somehow. I've been in construction 35 years, so I know a lot about construction. I also teach Mesa County Land Building Code, several other things at the college now. So I know quite a bit about the construction side. And I also know a lot about the roads and the need for what we have as a community. I know we're encouraging bikers and generating revenue and stuff like this, but I do agree, as stated before by the previous gentleman, that there is a time and a place for that. And those of us in the East Fruta Development, future development area, we did not buy our places to be developed. When we bought those places, we were not administered records saying, "You're in the East Boundary Fruta Development Area." We had no idea when we bought these parcels of land and built our homes and invested hundreds of thousands of dollars and contributed that back to our communities. I do all my grocery shopping here. Some of you may have seen me in the stores. I do a lot of construction work for here. I've pulled permits with your building department. We generate a lot of that revenue back with the expectation that, you know, we're working together and even though I'm not in Mesa County city limits, I have no right to vote for any of you. And I also have no right to vote any out that we feel are not sufficient for the job. I'm not stating that any of you are not, so don't take that wrong yet. But, you know, that's kind of the, the expectations we had in our heart when we bought these places was our dream property, places we were going to grow and die. And now, a very large amount of us feel that we just want to pull out. And that's not a good thing for us. It's not a good thing for the community. So I just ask you, strongly ask you and urge you to please reconsider your agreement with the Beto's and the condemnation of their land.
Your three minutes, if you could kindly wrap it up.
I'm right there, thank you. And I just ask that you reconsider that and all of the projects in the east expansion zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come up and speak? Thank you to everyone that did. With that, I'm going to go ahead and close public participation. So we have the consent agenda. Once again, as a reminder, any item on consent can be discussed and we can pull an item off of consent agenda to be discussed afterwards. Are there any changes to the consent agenda?
There are no changes to the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, great. Are there any questions or concerns about anything on the consent agenda? I do have a question on the red flag. I was reading through that. Do we take credit cards over the phone?
No. We, well, I take that back. We do take credit cards for business licenses, but not for utility bills.
Okay. And are we aware of, have there been any issues?
There have not.
All right, great. That's all my questions. All right, great. That's all my questions. Anybody else have any? All right, with that, can we please?
Counselor Hantsey?
I will afterwards.
Counselor Purser? Counselor Parrish? Counselor Downs? Counselor Miller and Counselor Williams? Motion passes six zero.
Now that that's been approved, I would like to acknowledge two people. For their willingness to volunteer. First is Molly Shepherdson for the Fruta Tourism Advisory Council. And Amanda Quigley to the Board of Adjustments. So thank you to those two for. Offering to step up and help. It's always greatly, greatly appreciated. All right, with the. No, I did not.
And Connie Overton.
We get to keep Connie.
Yes. So thank you. And thank you. All right. Between you and Rich.
You're between us.
All right, with that, we are going to move into our public hearing and action items. First up on the list is a quasi judicial public hearing ordinance twenty twenty five oh one. Which is a second reading and ordinance of the Fruta City Council vacating certain right. Certain street right of way for eighteen roads south of I and Henry Hipple, our city planner, is here to present. Henry, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Happy New Year to you all. Glad to be here. As you mentioned before, this is a second reading of an ordinance to vacate certain rights of ways. As was described, the rights of way to be vacated. Is adjacent to nine sixteen eighteen road. It's south of I road and it's the whole portion of eighteen road. South of that. Okay, legal notice. I'd like to touch on this ahead of time to ensure that. The public had adequate time to be able to be involved in an application process. This went to Planning Commission in November and then had a first reading in December and second reading, which is tonight. But the legal notice sets forth both public hearing dates, the Planning Commission meeting and the City Council meeting. So. Legal notice postcards are sent out at a radius of two hundred and fifty or three hundred and fifty feet around the subject property. You can see there in the highlighted blue areas. Those are all the. Specific property owners that received legal notice postcards for the Planning Commission meeting and the City Council meeting tonight. The dates of legal notice, they need to be accomplished at least no later than fifteen days prior to the first. Excuse me, the first public hearing date, which was in November and those legal notice items happen, postcard site posting. And in the newspaper all occurred well before the November twelfth Planning Commission meeting. The item before you or the the right of way location is that one kind of outlined in black. This dedication happened a long time ago and obviously no improvements. Or use of this right of way was ever needed or used. The property owner is the Lake We Don't Know LLC. They own the property on the east and the west side. So the vacation really just splits it and it goes to the the property owner as it is right now. And so obviously through our code, we have to process a vacation of right of way. Through a public hearing process with the recommendation from staff to Planning Commission to the City Council. And so. The reasoning for the this right of way vacation is to. To it's it's not usable. You can't really use it. It goes right into the river over a lake. The property was historically been used as kind of a gravel pit. And so just private use of the property in general over time has been used. There are no city utilities, nor are there any utilities from Yoot Water or Excel or Grand Valley Power in this area. And so no reservation of an easement would be needed, which we sometimes do for right of way vacations. Typically, it's a portion of right of way that's vacated. With that portion being used as like a multipurpose easement, utility or pedestrian easement, which we've done in the past. And so the the location of the vacation rental or not rental, the vacation of right of way. Doesn't need anything above and beyond just kind of getting rid of it, passing an ordinance. To acknowledge that for public record title and those sorts of things. Our code considers four criteria that must be met. It must not land lock any parcels, which it does not. It does not negatively affect adjacent properties. As I mentioned, both properties on the east and the west. Are the same property owner and they don't take access directly from the area being vacated or proposed. It will not decrease or reduce the quality of public services in this area. As I mentioned, there's no utilities in this area that provide public services to anyone else. And it must not be inconsistent with any transportation plan adopted by the city. Circulation plan does not support this being improved for a bridge or any other modal transportation corridor. So. It does check all those boxes to make a positive recommendation to the Planning Commission and to you, the City Council, to. Recommend approval of this ordinance to vacate the right of way in its entirety. No review agencies express any concerns with this right of way vacation and up to this point, we have not received any written public comments. Nor were any public comments received at the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission did recommend approval by a six to zero vote at their November twelfth twenty twenty four public hearing. And the staff's recommendation is on page sixty five of the Council pack. As I mentioned before, staff does recommend that the council adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh one. An ordinance vacating certain street right of way along eighteen road south of I road located in. In the city of Fruta. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Thank you. Is the property owner here? And would they like to speak?
The applicant's representative, the property owner's representative is here. Eric, I'm not sure if he has anything to add to it.
Eric, is there anything you'd like to add? All right. Thank you. As this is a public hearing, I'd like to open up the floor to public comment on this resolution twenty twenty five dash oh one. Is there anybody that would like to come up and speak? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public participation and bring it back. To counsel. If there's any questions that they would like to ask, Henry. All right. Hearing none.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five oh one, the first ordinance of the year. Second reading on an ordinance of the city of Fruta, Colorado, vacating certain street right of way along eighteen roads south of I road located in the city of Fruta.
Second. You have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments before we vote? All right.
Counselor Purser? Counselor Parrish? Counselor Downs? Counselor Miller? Counselor Williams? Counselor Hantsey? Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Our second is a legislative public hearing, resolution twenty twenty five dash oh two. A resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute a contract to purchase property in downtown Fruta. With that, I'd like to ask our interim city manager, Shannon Vassen, to come up and speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the opportunity to present. Resolution twenty twenty five oh two authorizes the interim city manager to execute all documents related to the purchase of a property in downtown Fruta. Currently, it's known as TBD North Mulberry, but it is the parking lot that the city has been leasing for the purposes of providing public parking. Just north of Hot Tomato and just east of Copper Club. I pull up the Mesa County Assessor aerial photo and I zoomed out way too far. But here is Circle Park right here. Here's the Civic Center. Here is Aspen Avenue where most of our downtown businesses are. So this is just a bit north of Aspen Avenue. And we've been using this for public parking for probably about the last year. We lease it out for nine thousand dollars a year from the current property owners, but we were always interested in potentially purchasing the lot if it ever became available at a reasonable price. The previous owner or the current owners, original asking price was two million dollars for this lot. In September, the council encouraged staff to engage with the current property owners and hopefully come up with a price that would work for us. And we went under contract for six hundred fifty thousand dollars. A few months ago. So funds to purchase the lot are available in twenty twenty five budget. The closing is scheduled for tomorrow morning. The siblings that own the property, it's their father's birthday and they inherited it from them. So they'd like to do the closing tomorrow if possible. So that's why this resolution is before you tonight. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them after public comment. Thank you.
Well, with that, we'd like to open up to public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak on resolution twenty twenty five oh two? All right. Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to counsel.
I think it's just a great opportunity for our community to have have this property for parking as as we're growing. Parking is not something that the need for parking is not decreasing but increasing. And so I think it's going to be a great asset for our community to have. When we are able to negotiate a fair price and and go forward. So glad we could have that.
I do know as we made the changes to Mulberry, there was concern about reduced parking and this helps with that.
I just wanted to commend the negotiations on that. We never used to call it the TBD. We used to call it the three million dollar lot because of how ridiculous the price was. So thank you very much for achieving that. We definitely need it. We definitely need the parking. So. That was something that I was very excited about. So thank you.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash oh two. A resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute a contract to purchase real estate in downtown Fruta.
Second.
First and second. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. Deb?
Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Parrish? Counselor Downs? Counselor Miller? Counselor Williams?
She stole my word.
Counselor Hantsey? And Counselor Purser? Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Can I pass this down to you? And I know there's a time sensitivity to that. All right, that concludes our. That section. And next we're going to go ahead and move into our administrative agenda. And this is an appeal by PSC of the Planning Commission's confirmation of the administrative decision. That the portion of the project within CSR Zone District must be undergrounded in order to be compatible with the Riverfront Park. With that, Henry, you're going to give staff presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And significantly taller than me, so. Not to be awkward at all about that. But again, glad to be here tonight. To you all about this application. As was mentioned, this is an application. Appeal of a planning commission's decision confirming the administrative decision to underground. Transmission line, new transmission line project in the CSR zone, which is referred to as the Riverfront Park. And I'll use those interchangeably as go through the presentation. Again, to kind of touch on legal notice before dive into the details of the application. And mention the fact that we had just, the City Council had just processed a few months ago, an amendment to our appeals land use code section. The kind of curing process and the process for ordinances did not take effect until after this application had a decision from the Planning Commission. So we're reviewing this under a previous code section. That code section's been provided in the application. Packet, the the number of pages is a little overwhelming, but it's important to add the fact that we're kind of using a code section. But that that land use code section does call out legal notice requirements after an appeal has been submitted. And acknowledged by staff that is complete in its entirety. And those legal notice. Happen in accordance with local laws, postcards, newspapers, site posting and a posting at City Hall. All have to happen within fifteen days of the first public hearing or the only public hearing in this matter. And those happen in November, late November. So. Apparently, you know, we did do a good outreach of the legal notice because it did garner some public feedback before you tonight during public participation. And I appreciate the public coming out and voicing their concerns about an application in their city. Here are two legal notice postings on the site. These border. Subject property on two sides that are accessed vehiculately and by pedestrians. That border Kingsview Lift Station. That's the posting on the left. And then the entrance to Snook's Bottom, the intersection right there. That's the picture on the right. So passerby's. If they miss one, they could see another and then they could become interested in a project or an application that the city is processing. To dive into kind of the application details, the original application number is twenty twenty four dash oh eight. It's six six eight three Transmission Line Rebuild. This type is an appeal that we're hearing tonight and the applicant is Excel Energy or PSCO. As it's explained in the staff report, but I'll use those kind of interchangeably as well. And again, this is an appeal by PSCO of the Planning Commission's confirmation. Of the administrative decision that the portion of the project within the CSR Zone District must be underground in order to be compatible with the Riverfront Park. So how we got here. Important to note that our code says that if there's one project with multiple review processes. That the decision making, the community development director can consolidate review into one process. That's so that the public can be involved at once instead of knowing which project they need to participate in. So we combine. We can combine in our code allowed uses by right and conditionally allowed uses if they're incorporated with one application. And so that's where the public hearing comes in and the the terminology for the Planning Commission confirming the administrative decision. Is the administrative decision applied to the CSR zone and Planning Commission reaffirm that via the land use code. To note, a pre-application meeting happens prior to any application being submitted. That's a discussion with the applicant and the city and any staff members that we feel like need to be involved. A neighborhood meeting happened on their behalf in twenty twenty two. Excel Energy hosted, I think it was two open houses in twenty twenty two to talk about this application. With the public prior to submitting an actual application. Then, once the application is submitted, we receive it, deem it complete and send it out to review agencies for comment period of twenty one days at minimum. And then we set the public hearing schedule and we have the public hearing. In this case, the Planning Commission's the decision making body on conditional use permits and staff for the administrative body is. The decision making body for administrative or allowed by right uses in the city. Timeline, the application was submitted on July second, twenty twenty four. Set on a public hearing schedule for August thirteenth. After Excel Energy received written comments from all review agencies, including staff. They requested a continuance to work with staff to kind of work through some of the review comments they received. At that point, they knew that a comment from staff was to underground the transmission line through the CSR zone or the Riverfront Park. At the August thirteenth meeting, the the Planning Commission, because there were members of the public there, they set a public hearing date for September tenth. That's that was their following public hearing date. And that way, people from the public, we didn't, don't necessarily need to do by law. Legal notice again. So any interested party that was invited to the Planning Commission meeting heard. That the application was being continued to a date specific time, which was September tenth. Again, the September tenth meeting, the agenda was posted, but the applicant again requested another continuance to continue to work with staff. Through review agency comments. And then it's important to note that at that September tenth meeting, because of the 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 second continuance, the Planning Commission felt like it was necessary. For the public to be able to provide some public comment. So they opened it up similar to what happened tonight during a public comment segment, but. With the understanding that there would be no dialogue, no discussion about the application, but to get it on record, the public had a chance to participate in public. Doesn't mean that they can't or couldn't. Have public comment at the following Planning Commission meeting, which occurred on October eighth. And so that was the public hearing date that the Planning Commission did have a chance to make a decision on. And once that decision was made, anybody can appeal that decision. They have thirty days to appeal under that. Code section. And so the appeal was submitted on November seventh, twenty twenty four by the applicant, as I stated before. And so the appeal was submitted on November 7, 2024 by the applicant, as I stated before. And then was set on a public hearing schedule for January 7. The code requires that the public hearing date happen within 45 days of the submittal. The applicant agreed to continue this past that 45 days because the council schedules, the budget, holiday schedule. Lots of things going on. You guys' schedules were packed from your, from an agenda standpoint. And so they agreed that tonight would be more efficient use of time for that. And so that's why we're hearing it tonight. So the planning commission meeting, this is, I think, what really obviously drives the appeal application is this motion here. But it's important to also note that the council or the planning commission did have dialogue leading up to this decision. And it's important to note that they understood what the application was. They took public comment. They received, you know, all the records that were put in there as established that they have submitted to us. They took all that dialogue and used it to come up with this motion that is before you tonight, is the motion to approve the conditional use permit in the industrial and residential zones overhead as presented with the condition that all review agency comments are met and confirming staff's administrative decision that the portion in the CSR Zone District hasn't allowed use be undergrounded in order to be compatible with the Riverfront Park. And this motion passed three to one. So the conditional use permit passed, the criteria that's used to consider conditional use permits, they felt like was compatible. It met the code, public safety, all of those concerns that conditional use permits contemplate had been met. So the decision-making was there. The part being appealed tonight is the, through the CSR Zone District. So here's a location map of kind of what we're talking about here, highlighted in, or that bold yellow color. Those three proposed pole locations, 7, 8, and 9 DE are the ones that staff is recommending and the planning commission's decision required in order to be compatible to be underground. So here's some photos of the area. I'm sure we're all familiar with this area, but just maybe for the public certification and to remind us of the area being contemplated tonight. This is at the Kingsview and Snook's Bottom intersection, looking towards the Mesa. And you can see the Highway 34 bridge over the Colorado River. Here's another view from that vantage point, just a little wider of that area. Those poles will be noticeable in this area and in the park. Here's a view from the bridge looking directly towards the Riverfront Park. In front of those green trees that you see in the center is essentially like the disc golf course and the open space area. And then Kingsview Estates is kind of directly to the top left of this photo. And here's a photo looking west at the lift station, the Kingsview Lift Station, right where vehicles can park to access this Riverfront Park of the open space. And then another vantage point looking northwest, directly towards the Riverfront Park. You can see the vegetation is healthy there. It is not like it is right now where it seems less healthy, but it is winter time. So so jumping into like the appeal application criteria or the things that need to be considered. As I mentioned before, the appeals are based on the record established, which is why your packet was so lengthy and why my presentation is going to feel long-winded. But it's important to note that the appeal is based on the decision, and we need to make that a record known again. Attachments are provided. Those are listed in the cover sheet and in the staff report. And then, like I mentioned before, a previous land use code section applies to this, which is what we're using to make this decision tonight. And those are located in pages 422 and 423 of the council packet. So who can appeal? Anybody can appeal under the code section cited there. Any person aggrieved by a decision by the community development director, which would be an administrative decision. Planning Commission Historic Preservation Board or Board of Adjustment may appeal a decision to the city council. The city council has the authority to decide all appeals made by those entities, which is again, why we're here tonight. And so the application, the party making the applicant or the appeal shall have the burden of proof providing or proving the necessary facts to warrant reversal or amendment of the decision being appealed. Such proof shall include applicable specific section references within this code and shall be provided with the application. And then the application shall be based on the record established in the decision-making process. The council tonight has four criteria that need to be considered. As stated before, the facts stated in the application and as presented. The requirements and intent of the applicable standards of this code compared to the decision that's being appealed. Evidence related to how the applicable standards from this code have been administered or interpreted in the past and consistency with the comprehensive plan. And so I'd like to kind of discuss three of those before you tonight as far as how the applicant, the application for appeal coincides with the existing decision that's been made and provide additional information to you tonight. So their appeal for the CSR Zone for the decision that was made is based on three reasons. Inconsistency with Fruta's code, violation of Colorado case law, and high costs of undergrounding. I think to kind of jump into it, there's a lot to kind of think about with this application. And if you did have a chance to read every single page, then I'm sure that took a long time. But when we, when we think about this appeal and inconsistency with Fruta's code, it's important to realize the fact that the compatibility standards are considered not only for conditional use permits, but in our code, they're considered for allowed uses by right. This is applied generally to every application that's submitted to the city of Fruta and staff, whether it's a conditional use permit or an administrative approval. A couple of examples that come to mind that I feel like we could probably picture in our heads tonight is the Dairy Queen, which is nearby. Staff in 2016 had to apply the compatibility criteria because of the adjacent existing land use, which is the RV Park nearby. If you recall, the Dairy Queen has a drive-through that wraps around behind. With drive-throughs, you have noise that's presented when you're ordering or talking to staff. And so a noise restriction was placed in order to be compatible, along with some additional landscaping to buffer the uses thereof. The True Value and the O'Reilly Autos, those are two specific examples that come to mind. And that's reaching back to 2012, 2011 timeframe in order to be compatible with existing residential land uses. There were conditions placed on in order to meet the compatibility criteria in our code, again, from like early 2000s with the residential zone. That included landscaping, lighting, buffering, parking, and access to just name a few. So we have been consistent in our code in applying compatibility standards, not only with conditional use permits, which was applied for this application in the industrial and residential zones, but also allowed uses by right for other applications within the city and including this one before you tonight. So a little long-winded, but to also touch on the fact that consistency with the city's comprehensive plan. Contain in our comprehensive plan is parks health, open space, and trails. Thinking some important to consider the fact that this is going through the CSR Zone, which is set aside for parks more specifically as we speak to this area, and that the Parks Health Open Space and Trails directly contemplates this area as a natural environment, riparian area with lots of visual and natural amenities to it to preserve for now and into the future. And so those are things that we considered during the dialogue with the applicant in the planning commission meeting and the original staff report and in this staff report before you tonight, which further implements staff's consideration for the compatibility criteria. The applicant provided some exhibits in their appeal application and made some statements that seem a little misleading, that make it seem like, you know, the city of Fruta as a policy allows by right above-ground transmission lines through its CSR Zone. And, you know, looking through our records, we can't find any documentation of city approving an allowed use by right of a transmission line through a city park or just parks in general that are zoned CSR. And so that statement, whether it was misleading or untrue, is the fact that this is the first time we've seen it. The first time the planning commission has seen an application like this, the first time that I believe that the city council is seeing an application like this. Although this is an appeal and not a decision on the original application. But nonetheless, I think it's important to note that as well. I did touch on the comprehensive plan a little bit. The applicant also submitted an exhibit known as the Powerline Trails Act, which is approved Colorado Legislature in 2022. The policy or that bill is geared more towards existing transmission lines that have existing easements and the reuse of those easements for public trails or pedestrian access, not vice versa, where the pedestrian amenity and the open space is already provided. And then the transmission line easements don't exist yet currently come following that. So it's a little flipped. So I just want to make that clear as it doesn't necessarily apply, given the fact that the decision tonight or the decision that was made and rendered at the planning commission meeting was not to deny the application entirely. It was to place a condition in order to meet the compatibility standards in our code to be compatible with the Riverfront Park and the CSR Zone. I touched on this a little bit verbally, but here's a snippet of our code that calls out what we're talking about. Transmission lines above ground and below ground or underground are allowed in the CSR Zone. But allowed or the A means allowed outright in the indicated zone, subject compatibility with surrounding properties pursuant to Section 1705-080C, which is what was used to, the compatibility section was used to analyze the above-ground transmission lines through the residential zone district, which is the PUD Sunset Point and/or Kingsview if it crosses that, and the industrial zones, which is near Mondi and Fruta or FHE and the Monument Powder Coating Business, just for reference. So that code section was used to determine whether or not to recommend approval or denial of the conditional use permit. And the applicant in their appeal statements don't mention anything of that fact that that same criteria was used to recommend approval of an application for above-ground and recommend approval to bury the transmission lines in the Community Services and Recreation Zone District or the CSR. To kind of acknowledge the planning commission's decision, I think that's an important thing to add to this, is that the planning commission is the decision-making body on conditional use permits. They have a process that they know need to go through, similar to the city council, in the fact that they take consideration from the public. They take staff's recommendation. They ask questions to the applicant, garner responses, have a discussion. And the appeal application makes it seem like the planning commission may not like it. So they're using the compatibility standards to make them place it underground. And that's simply not true because of the process, the due process that's afforded to everyone going through a public hearing process. In this case, it was Excel Energy. The decision-making authority used unfettered and they use their discretion in order to make that decision. So I think it's important to note that the planning commission issued a fair decision in this application before you tonight. And that, you know, before you is a chance to either affirm, reverse, or amend their decision. So that's, that's kind of, at the end of the night, that's what we need to, or you need to, as a city council, need to, are tasked with. I'm sure I'm leaving out some other details of this application. I know you guys will have questions. But to finish up kind of the long-winded verse of reiterating the public record of this analysis of the application and the appeal, everything that was submitted does not change the way that staff has reviewed this application. And so staff is still, you know, supportive of the original decision that was rendered in the staff report, and that's within this packet before you tonight. I'll, I'll wrap that up with that. The timeline of this application is still being sought out through other review agencies, the BLM, Mesa County, just to name a few, and in addition to us. And so we still have a decision to make tonight. And so that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor. And I could turn the time over back to you.
Great. Thank you very much. I know I saw a number of people with Excel here. And I'm not exactly sure of the order of which you guys are going to speak. So I invite you guys, please come on up, and the floor is yours.
Mayor, council members, council persons, thank you very much. My name is Brad McLeod. I am the area manager for Excel Energy Community Relations in Western Colorado. My, my address is 2330 Elder Bay Court in Grand Junction, Colorado. So a little bit down the road. We appreciate, first of all, I want to thank staff for the efforts they put into this process. As stated previously, we actually began this process in good faith back in 2021. Hosted two public meetings at the REC Center and actually one online virtual as well to make sure that we could get as much public input as possible. Here in a moment, I'll introduce Jen Chester with our Siding and Land Rights to do a presentation on our portion of it. I would like to remind everybody that what we are considering and what we're asking for in this case is a reversal on the decision on what is in the CRS. And the reason for that is we looked at many alternative options, and that is the one portion correct, that we do not currently have the easement. We did previously and currently still have the easement where the line is in place, and it goes directly through the Kingsview subdivision. That was one of the concessions we made in good faith as we were looking at options here to try to consider not going back through a subdivision as we do this. And I think that's important in full disclosure for the room to remember, we are looking at ways to find alternatives to work with everybody in this process. I would also state that while we're asking for reversal, we're also trying to provide some clarification and answer questions for council as we work through this. And one of them is to remind you that to current Public Utility Commission standards, the extra burden of the cost of undergrounding. First of all, it would not actually eliminate all three structures. What it would do is have two transition structures on the end. One pole would be removed. You'd still have a cabinet in the middle, and we'd have to have an access road across. So you're not going to remove a significant amount of structure across the burden of the area, but also according to public utility. And I'm stamping probably right on Jennifer's presentation, so I apologize. But you would also bore the cost of the $9.7 to $11 million extra burden. And that's per current Public Utility Commission's policy. And that doesn't include any legal failures or anything else, but the actual cost of construction would have to be borne by the taxpayers of the city of Fruta. So we just want to make sure everything is clear and everybody knows what we're asking for. And that's just a reversal on that portion of the CRS. I will defer the rest of my time to my distinguished colleague, Jennifer Chester with our Siding and Land Rights. And thank you all again very much for your time. And thanks staff for their efforts in this as well. I look forward to finding some resolution and moving this process forward so we can replace some 70-plus-year-old power lines that definitely need to be upgraded to keep the system safe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. I think I'm the shortest up at the microphone this evening, so we'll go ahead and make that adjustment. And thanks for having us here to talk about this rebuild project. My name is Jennifer Chester. I'm the senior manager of our Siding and Land Rights team. I oversee land acquisition and land use permitting in that role. Address is 1800 Larimer in Denver, Colorado. We have a few slides here to run through on the project, just in case, as Henry mentioned, you didn't get the opportunity to read all the pages in the packet. But I think you generally have some familiarity. So as mentioned, this is a nearly 70-year-old transmission line that we are proposing to rebuild. We would rebuild and replace the structures, the wires, everything as part of this. It's not a light project. That takes some effort and some work to do that, as well as some planning. That rebuild also involves designing That rebuild also involves designing to our current standards. So what our existing wood poles would be replaced with steel poles. Those are wildfire kind of resistant as compared to the wood poles, so they have some upgraded abilities in that way. And then also, as part of our rebuilds, we always just look to support any future growth and development in an area and take that into consideration when we design the line, not only the line itself, but the location. Once that line is rebuilt, we will remove our existing transmission line. So you don't get two for one in terms of transmission lines. We'll replace that. The map on the right-hand side of this slide shows you the current location there in red. As mentioned, it goes through the King's View Estates area across what is, as I understand it, approved as the Sunset Point Development, onto BLM land and beyond the City of Fruta area that way. The purple line is the route that we presented in the application to the city, as well as the line presented in our Mesa County application and in our approvals with federal agencies such as the BLM. Next slide. So as I mentioned, this is a 69-kilovolt line built in 1956 specifically. We have seen development, as mentioned, both King's View Estates and Sunset Point. Encroached on that line, the line was there first, and homes were built and lots were platted around that line. As Brad mentioned, in that way, we've looked at alternatives to rebuilding in that existing corridor to accommodate and can take into consideration that growth and development. Next slide. As part of that, we did a routing study that we started in 2021 to analyze a number of options that you see on the right-hand side, taking into account a number of factors. Can we get the land rights? What would that take? Do we need to make adjustments at the substations? What would the design of the line be? What are our system planning needs? What are the environmental and cultural considerations? What are the existing unplanned land uses? Certainly, public feedback and stakeholder input as well. We analyzed a large number of alternatives to get end-to-end. As you can see with all of those lines on the map, approximately 32 miles of alternatives were analyzed. This is about a four-mile route, so a number of different options considered. Next slide. So this is just a list of various interactions that we had during that time since 2021, including number of discussions with various jurisdictions, Fruta, the public in those public meetings, BLM, Mesa County, and others. As noted, our application was submitted this summer, and we've been in that process since. This slide just touches on that community outreach, the two in-person public meetings and the virtual meeting that were done in 2022 to solicit the feedback regarding our routing study. That included us sending out mailers and holding those meetings in person, publishing newspaper ads. As noted there, throughout that process, we received 11 public comments, primarily from those in King's View Estates, asking for the line to be relocated from that neighborhood. Next slide. So again, this is the map that shows the existing corridor in red and the proposed corridor in purple, and the purple, again, representing what was included in our application to the city, as well as the other jurisdictions. We ultimately did not select a number of the other alternatives for a variety of reasons, including, as mentioned, the development that's encroached on the existing corridor, concerns about being located adjacent to the highway in a narrow corridor where we didn't have a lot of room to place that back from the road, concerns of residents and others in the area, and based on discussions with the city and others. So as mentioned, and Henry covered this as well, we have that planning commission approval on October 8th, and we are here to talk about a very specific portion of that decision related to the condition requiring the transmission line to be placed underground in the CSR zone or in the Riverfront Park area, and specifically those three structures, seven, eight, and nine. I think that these were covered also in Henry's presentation, but the three main issues that we'll talk about tonight are up on the screen, and we'll just move through those. So as mentioned, the CSR zone allows for above-ground transmission lines as an allowed use, subject to compatibility with the surrounding land uses. And further, the code defines compatibility as the ability to coexist with those surrounding land uses. Next slide. So I think that this definition is really important, I think, as we think about it and as we put together our appeal here. And what is compatibility? We understand that the allowed use in the code describes that it needs to be compatible, and that was the discussion with the planning commission in October, is what are we making compatible by placing the line underground? What is the issue that we're trying to solve there? And primarily, that existence or ability to coexist with the existing uses, being the trails, the disc golf course, and other recreational uses on that park property. So we wanted to offer for you all a couple of examples of where above-ground transmission lines and ours in particular do coexist with those types of uses and other jurisdictions in the state of Colorado. You know, those include the disc golf course, the planned 20-foot-wide emergency access road that would cut through the Riverfront Park to ultimately connect to the Sunset Point Development and King's View Road, utility corridors, including the gas corridor, as well as the trails that are used for a number of activities. So here are a few examples of our transmission lines in a variety of places in Colorado where they're coexisting with certain types of land uses, whether that be open space, being adjacent to more scenic corridors. And then in the bottom right is transmission line co-located next to open space trail. In addition, we have overhead transmission lines that do exist in disc golf courses and other parts of Colorado. We worked as part of the location of this, the proposed location in the Riverfront Park, to make sure that we were not impacting the use of that disc golf course and ultimately did make arrangements and locate the poles in different areas to allow for that play on the disc golf course. The example we have here is another line that we have in a disc golf course elsewhere in Colorado that's above ground, and folks continue to utilize that space. So I mentioned that we did a fair amount of work with folks to micro-site those pole locations, the three in question here that are part of the condition and required to be undergrounded, to move what was originally the route that you see on the left-hand side of the slide to its current proposed location on the right-hand side, considering the disc golf and play there, as well as the trails. On the right-hand side, you can also see overlaid there the Sunset Point Development Plan that shows that access road cutting through the Riverfront Park. As mentioned, we did provide to the city in October the cost estimates to underground the line in this area because it is considerable to underground a transmission line. Typically, and as evidenced here in the cost estimates, it's about a 10x or it costs 10 times more to construct a transmission line underground than to construct it overhead. And so it's not necessarily just an adder of, you know, plant a couple of trees, point the lights downward. It is a huge expense, and it is one that the PUC has ruled on a number of occasions that cannot be borne by the taxpayers in the entire state of Colorado for a local benefit, which in this case, undergrounding would be. So we have on screen, sorry, Delaney, she thinks I'm going to the next one, and I keep making her go back, two cost estimates. I just wanted to point out that in discussion with city staff, there was consideration and discussion around potentially undergrounding this line either within King's View Road or within the emergency access road that will ultimately go through the Riverfront Park. And so that's what those estimates represent there, the 9-point million and the 10-point million, or excuse me, 11-point million. So that the, those were longer lengths of underground than what are contemplated in the condition imposed in October. Those cost estimates also represent the delta between what it would cost us to place the line overhead and the underground costs. Those are the two alternatives that those cost estimates reflect. Again, that is placing it underground from essentially Highway 340 up through King's View Road to a point where it would transition overhead. The other alternative on the right is to place it and co-locate it with the emergency access road going through the park, ultimately coming up the hillside there into what will be the future Sunset Point area and transitioning overhead there. Some of you may be more familiar with underground transmission line construction than others, and you may perhaps be more familiar with distribution undergrounding because that's what's more common to see in communities. Distribution undergrounding can usually be accomplished by a very small trench and laying cable in trench or pulling that cable through underground. Transmission, underground transmission construction is significantly different, does come with a fairly large footprint that is impactful to the area, and that's what's represented in the pictures on the right. So underground transmission line construction consists of us placing underground vaults, which are is the concrete box that you see in the lower left there, that allows us and our crews to access and pull through cable and conduct repairs as needed. Those are fairly large in size. They have to allow for people to be in them and placed underground. We then also install conduit in the upper, picture in the upper right-hand side there, that is placed in that kind of grid pattern, and then it is backfilled with an appropriate fill, kind of equivalent to concrete for the length of that underground line. Then soil and everything is backfilled on top of that. So it's a very different situation than us very small trench and placing cable in that. As mentioned and provided in the packet and provided to staff in October, the PUC has viewed a number of cases, and so case law exists here in Colorado around jurisdictions requiring undergrounding. And when those decisions have been appealed to the regulator, utility regulators, the Public Utilities Commission, and the results of those being that utilities cannot be forced to pay the cost of undergrounding when it is more expensive than the equivalent overhead alternative. As we discussed with the city and staff back in October, we are willing to work with the city on undergrounding the line through Riverfront Park, but that's a cost that the city would have to enter into an agreement to cover with us. We're more than happy to do that. So as noted here, you know, our request is really to reverse that decision around requiring the undergrounding, or alternatively amend that condition to enter into that cost agreement with us to place the line underground and pay for that cost upfront so that we can move forward with the rebuild of the line. That's the last. I think, well, I guess with that, the undergrounding, if Fruta would like for us to move forward with the underground and agrees to the cost share component of that, then we ultimately do need to arrive at a decision as to where that underground line is placed. The condition as written requires three structures to be placed underground, and Brad mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, in order to transition an overhead line underground, the eastern structure and the western structure would have to be transition structures where the line dives underground into those areas and then pops back up. So that, I think, doesn't accomplish maybe what the city is interested in, which is why we were previously talking about underground routes in other locations that would be for that longer distance. And if that is the direction that the city would like to go, then we do need to arrive at a decision on what that route would be, whether it's using the emergency access road or King's View Road for that underground alignment. We continue to post information and share information out there about the project. We also continue to take public comment through either the website, the email, or the hotline number as well. So those channels are always open for folks to communicate with us about the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Appreciate it. With that, we're going to bring it back to council. But I do, I'm going to ask that the city attorney, Mary Elizabeth, introduce herself because I'm sure she's here to make sure that we follow the process and so people know who she is.
Thank you, Mayor. Mary Elizabeth Geiger, city attorney.
Thank you. All right. Questions, comments, discussion items. So first, clarification, any clarification questions for this thing? I do have one, but go ahead.
Clarification, because I think compatibility seems to be a big component. If staff could just readdress compatibility, how we look at it and assess it to a project.
Could you restate the question?
As compatibility is a significant component to the argument, can you please address how it's stated in the land use code and how you analyze the project to see how it falls within or without our definition of the compatibility within our land use code?
Yeah. So I think it's important to include that whole section of the code, and I'll just read it word for word, and then we can, I can speak about that. So, "Section 1705080C Land Use Compatibility Criteria states, 'The city seeks to provide a fair and consistent manner in which to consider compatibility within the overall context of the Fruta Comprehensive Plan, existing adjacent land uses, applicable zoning district requirements, and other city codes and regulations. Nothing in this section shall prevent the City of Fruta from denying a land use application based on relevant code requirements or taking enforcement action against a property owner where a nuisance or other code violation occurs. For all land uses, compatibility is provided when a proposed use can coexist with other existing uses in the vicinity without one use having a disproportionate or severe impact on other use or uses. The applicable city's decision-making body may consider other uses existing and approved, and may consider all potential impacts relative to what customarily occurs in the applicable zone and those which are foreseeable, given the range of land uses allowed in the zone. The review authority may require conditions of approval to promote compatibility between uses.'" That's word for word from our code. This is copied in the staff report twice. Our analysis as staff for all projects that need to be considered under this code section come from the basis of that early point that's mentioned, is the overall context of the Fruta Comprehensive Plan, the existing land uses, applicable zoning district requirements, and other city codes and regulations that's further implemented on anything that's foreseeable in existing zone districts that are around the zone in which a project is being established. So we take all that into consideration, like the appeal application that's before you tonight, the consideration of how have we handled this in the past, in a nutshell, and we utilize that thought process in order to make determinations, much of which is already codified in our land use code with design standards and landscaping and parking. But in this case, we're using the comprehensive plan to further our implementation of the requirement to, again, not deny an application, but in order to be compatible, also be allowed as an allowed use by right as undergrounding a transmission line through a CSR zone. And so we use the comprehensive plan as, the comprehensive plan states on page 69, goal number six, preserve the natural features of the city and surrounding landscapes through partnerships landscapes through partnerships with local land managers and organizations. I think it's important to consider preservation of natural features of the city and surrounding landscapes. This is further implemented in our Frost Plan or our Parks Health Open Space and Trails, uh, master plan, which speaks to the Riverfront Park more specifically. As the Riverfront Park was previously named Kingsview Open Space, the parcel is located adjacent to Snook's Bottom along the Colorado River and State Highway three forty. The Riverfront Park is approximately thirty-seven acres in size. This park provides high-quality open space resource for the Fruta community and is an important riparian location. Fruta Riverfront Park contains a disc golf course, social trails, and natural and undeveloped river access. Again, using the comp plan as it states in the compatibility section, the first sentence is, needs to be considered along with the comp plan, the comprehensive plan. We use the, the compatibility criteria for, uh, the residential and industrial uses, because there's already a transmission line going through those zone districts. It'd be difficult to argue the fact that it's not compatible anymore when it currently exists. So that's where kind of that decision, uh, came from and was further implemented in the planning commission meeting.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Got any other, have a clarification question?
Yes, I just want to make sure I understand. So if we uphold the decision, we are committing to that cost burden?
No.
Okay.
We're not.
Yeah, can we get a little bit more information on how that, how that works?
So.
And before we do that real quick, before we do that, is that part of what we're supposed to consider or not?
That is information that's in the record that was part of what Excel did present at the planning commission hearing, is that, that undergrounding would require, um, payment by the city for the difference between the two. I, I saw, um, you know, the cost estimates, though, that you guys do have in the packet and that were presented, were actually not though for the undergrounding through the CSR River.
This is, I was going to ask for a point of clarification on that.
These were costs of undergrounding, um, if it went through Kingsview Road or the emergency access road. So, um, I would, I guess for your, for your consideration, if that's a question, you know, you might want to bring, um, public service up to ask if they do have a cost estimate for the difference in the underground, undergrounding, um, through Riverfront Park.
I was actually going to ask that for a point of clarification, because when I first read the packet, I took that eleven point three as going through the park. And then I did see on there for point of clarification, that's actually if you were to go through Kingsview. But when I looked on the Excel website, it said the average cost of undergrounding on flat level is about, and I'm going from memory, so I apologize, about one point four, uh, five million per mile. So I'm kind of curious if I'm wrong on terms of that estimate for flattened level undergrounding, uh, and why it's kind of that either or in terms of, as we look at cost. Yes, please do. No, it please, it has to in the mic so we can hear.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. I'm sorry, I did not catch your name.
So I think, um, again, short, um, important to know, and, and maybe what I didn't articulate well in my presentation that I'll try to do better at here, is that the condition as written requires, um, undergrounding of three, um, structures in the park, the, uh, three of the poles in the park. The line, there's more of the line that exists in the Riverfront Park. And so if really what is, is attempted to be done with that condition is to say that within the park, it needs to be undergrounded to be compatible, we need to not only consider those three poles, but the associated wires, um, that cross the park as well, all the way from, um, highway three forty and that lift station area that, um, was in Henry's presentation in the picture, um, basically up to Kingsview Road would be that zone in, in that way.
So five points total, the three underground and two bookends.
Yeah, essentially, it would have to be kind of that, those, you know, five-ish poles roughly, but that whole length, not just the three. So when you see the two cost estimates that are up there, the one that, um, approximates going through, um, the Riverfront Park and undergrounding everything in the park in that CSR zone is the one in the emergency access road. That cost. Because if we were to just focus on the three poles mentioned in the condition, again, um, the first one would be a transition, so it would actually be an above-ground pole that has additional equipment attached to it, um, that would take the line underground. It would be undergrounded then from that transition pole, we'll call that seven, because that's the number that's in the map, um, between that location, between seven, eight, and then at pole nine, it would come back above ground as the condition is written. But what those cost estimates provided and what we discussed with the staff that led us to generate those cost estimates is that there's that planned emergency access road through the park, and we would co-locate through that, um, to get back up to Kingsview Road entirely underground, so that everything in the CSR zone is below ground. And technically, we have to actually use that access road. That access road has to be in place, um, to allow us to get up that hill. We can't just run the, the conduit up the hill, and Parker can tell you why as the engineer.
Can I ask a cost question before we do engineering? Okay. If we did the transition to just the, then that would be less money than what we've been shown here.
Parker Rozak, uh, Transmission Line Engineering Manager for Excel in Colorado, uh, eighteen hundred Laramie Street, Denver, Colorado. Yeah, so realistically, if we're not able to have any overhead transmission in the CSR, then the estimate to underground it from the highway up to the road, using the twenty-foot access road, is what we think it would cost to comply. I guess is the way I would put it. Okay. So, yeah, there's still a structure on each end, I guess, I think, the one on three forty is technically in the county, maybe. I don't actually sure exactly where all the, the jurisdiction gets really funky over there, right? You know, it's a lot of holes in the map, I guess, if you want to say it. So, um, yeah, so does that make sense? I guess, so that's, that's basically what I, I would guess I would.
So still the eleven million?
Basically, yeah. So.
Nine to, nine to eleven.
But we don't have a firm cost, cost estimate of what that would be.
Correct. And there's, there's a lot of complicating factors into that right now, because there's no roads there. So, um, there's a lot of assumptions on what the road will be, how we'll be able to work in it, what it's going to be made out of, um, all those things. And commodities drive underground cable costs significantly. There's a significant amount of copper in the underground cable. So depending on what commodities are doing, the copper cost, the cable can be wildly varies, um, if you look at copper indices. So, um, you know, the most recent, uh, cable price we just got for a cable that we would put in this type of project was a hundred and forty dollars a foot. So, um, there's three of those per phase. So, you know, for each foot of cable we put in the ground to build the transmission line, um, that, and that's just the cable, that's not installed, that's just the cable cost. So you're talking, uh, what is that? Four hundred and forty, four hundred and twenty dollars, four hundred and twenty dollars, uh, a foot of just cable cost. So then you still have to build a duck bank, you still have to, you know, put the vaults in the ground, you still have to build the transition structures, you have all the terminators, things like that. And there's potentially a consideration on a project like this being a radio line. So that's one of the reasons that we're looking at a new right-of-way is that it, there's only one line that feeds the substation, right? The, the Fruta substation. So the potentially, because out underground takes a while to restore, so if there's a fault, uh, cable failure, or if someone digs into the cable, it typically takes some time between three and six weeks to put the line back in service. Most recent dig-in we had in Denver, uh, we had someone directionally drilling, uh, communications line, hit a one fifteen KV line, and that took almost four weeks to put back in service. That substation had a second feed, so the community wasn't out of power, but it just takes a long time, uh, when those things happen. So, um, yeah, then I guess to your question on the cost, um, you know, typically we see ten to thirty X depending on the voltage, um, for undergrounding versus an overhead line. Typically, a line like this costs somewhere in the one to one point five million dollars a mile, so we would expect that a mile of line somewhere between ten and fifteen million dollars. And then it does depend on, you know, what's in the way. So most of our underground projects are in dense metro areas where it's very complicated, right? There's a lot of other obstructions, a lot of things you're building around, you know, distribution lines, gas lines, sewer lines, you know, all those things. We wouldn't have that here, so it's a little bit cleaner when you get to the construction. But, you know, we also have this giant bluff that is kind of a completing, complicating factor. Underground cable, uh, really doesn't, can't, can't go vertically very easily. It needs to be, uh, held basically every so often, because, uh, the weight of the cable, it's very heavy. If I brought a sample, like, it's, you know, super heavy. It's typically in the twenty to thirty pounds per foot, um, is what it weighs. So what the cable does, if it's too vertical, is it pulls itself apart. And then the installation fails, and then the line faults, and then we have to replace the cable. So, um, not that we can't overcome that, you know, the, the road, we looked at that, um, the existing road, um, up Kings Ranch, and then, uh, that new access road. Those are buildable, uh, just, you know, it just, there's a lot to do still to, like, figure out what the actual cost would be, as far as like bidding out the contracting cost, bidding out the cable, cable installation, um, and, and you're working with, uh, the folks on, you know, where it's going to go in the road. Like, for example, if we were on the existing Kings Mill Road, I think, is it called Kings? Kingsview, sorry, Kingsview Road. You know, what other obstructions are in there, where would it sit, um, things like that. You know, there's a lot of engineering work that has to get done, um, upfront, you know, to be able to say this is what it ends up costing. So, um, I don't know, does that answer kind of all those questions you kind of had around there? Happy to add more.
But I, I want to get through clarification questions, and I'm sure there'll be more.
I would like to, um, seek clarification on what the difference in above-ground and underground installation of that would be, or is that what the difference is? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so the, the cost estimates, what we did is we took, um, we put an estimate together for installing, uh, the underground from the point on the map you saw, basically, right? The two options, and then we deducted out the cost of what it would have cost us to put the overhead in. So it, you know, the underground option, you know, I don't, I don't know the exact numbers I have in front of me, but, you know, it would have been whatever, twelve million dollars, say, and then two million dollars off for the, the overhead that wasn't utilized. So.
I have all sorts of potential clarifying questions, but I am not sure they're relevant. And so I want to ask one to maybe get some of them off the table or have them on the table. So the first question is what we're really looking at is to, do we see that the planning commission was within their right based on the compatibility and the reasons that they cited as to make their decision? The seventeen point oh five point oh eight zero C, were they in, are we just looking to see if they were in, in line or whatever the correct word would be to make that decision? I have other questions, but if it's just that question, these other questions are not relevant.
Sure. So, um, first off, it was, and it was a community development director's decision. Remember that the transmission lines through the CSR zone district were, that was an administrative decision, um, that was confirmed by planning commission. But that is the only piece that's on appeal, because Excel did receive the conditional use permits for the other zone districts. Obviously, they're not appealing those because that, you know, they're doing what they would like to do. So it is just that narrow, um, question as to whether or not, uh, the community development director, as confirmed by planning commission, properly applied your code provisions.
And along those lines, the conditional use permit, is it specific to the new, the new path in which they want?
No, the conditional use permit is, you're not considering that tonight at all. That's in the residential and the industrial zone districts. So that has nothing to do with what's happening in Riverfront Park.
Correct. But I understand that generally speaking, though, the conditional use permit that was approved through administration confirmed with planning commission was for the new, the new path, which includes CSR section.
Not through Kingsview.
No, so first off, that was not an administrative decision. The conditional use permit piece for those two zone districts was a planning commission decision. And that, I, I will defer to staff as to whether that alignment in residential and industrial zones, is that the current alignment of existing? That alignment didn't change, is that right? Or has that alignment changed from what's, from what was? Is that a new alignment, or is that an existing easements?
So I think what you're asking is, the conditional use permit that was approved by planning commission, does that apply to the new lines in those zone districts that they had their decision-making authority to do so? And yes, the new route, they needed the conditional use permit. They didn't need a conditional use permit for their existing route. So the new route then required the CUP. Yeah. Okay.
Well, I'm going to ask one, and then Mary Elizabeth can tell me if it's outside of the scope. The cost, back to the cost, was referenced that, um, that it, like, it would be on the city, um, or taxpayers, sorry.
I think we need clarification on that as well. My understanding is it's Excel's expectation that the Public Utilities Commission would come back and say it's on the city, but that's not a foregone conclusion. Is that correct?
That's correct. So, well, a couple of things. First off, um, the, you as counsel right now can't commit to paying anything due to Tabor. So you'd have to go through appropriations first and foremost before you could even say, yes, we're going to pay something. To the question about what the Public Utilities Commission would do, uh, if you decided to, uh, uphold the planning commission decision to confirming the undergrounding, um, through the CSR zone district, uh, and challenge the requirement for there to be any cost, additional cost to the city, I mean, I will let Excel speak to what might happen next, but my understanding is then they would take that to the Public Utilities Commission for a decision on who would bear that cost. Once that was determined, um, if it was determined that the city needed to bear that cost, you'd obviously get some hard numbers, um, and, you know, you'd have to appropriate for that in the budget to be able to actually commit to paying it.
And then that was, um, referenced, if it's only for local benefit, that it would be, that it is on typically, um, said to be at the city's cost. I'm just curious, what, what has, what does the criteria look like where it, where it's not considered just for local benefit? This is an Excel question.
So what I was referencing, their prior decision from the PUC and their decisions, um, in reviewing other local jurisdictions' requirements of undergrounding, where they determined that undergrounding in a specific location at the request of a jurisdiction was a local benefit and not a system-wide benefit, and that was part of their decision. I can't speak to how the PUC might, um, have arrived at that particular decision, but generally, that's what we see, and that's what we, um, often have to consider in the work that we do and when we take things to, to the PUC to explain the cost, um, especially if it's a cost that's outside of the normal, is to say, is this something that benefits the larger system, or is this something that benefits a local area? Because if we are asking our ratepayers to bear that cost, that's every ratepayer in Colorado, not just the local jurisdiction, um, that, that is requested that ask.
Thank you.
So I've got a clarification, um, I think would go to you, Mary Elizabeth. If, uh, council decides to uphold the decision to underground, that does not end future conversations or the future ability to have additional discussions on other possible solutions. Is that correct?
Are you talking about potential other routes or?
Other routes, or where we transition from above ground to underground. Where, if we uphold the decision today, that doesn't mean we can't have further discussion to come up with other potential solutions.
That, I mean, I guess generally that's correct. You know, whatever decision you make tonight, uh, if Excel or PESCO is not satisfied with that decision, um, they can also file a Rule one oh six action in the district court, challenging whether or not this body acted arbitrarily and capriciously in, um, upholding the planning commission hearing. So there could be a court challenge, but that, you're correct, there's never shutting the door to trying to reach other solutions unless, of course, the other party decides they don't want to have those discussions. If there's different discussions about different alignments, possible alignments for this, you know, that would require a new application. because it depends on where that alignment is going to go and what would be the applicable portion of the code.
Is only where it goes east, north and easting and not vertical.
Right, so if you were going to, if you wanted to talk about potentially a different alignment, moving it out of CSR, keeping it out of Kingsview, putting it somewhere else, that would require a new application. I think Dan really wants to say something.
If Dan wants to, Dan will need to do some self.
You know, so which may or may not trigger, you know, which would probably trigger another land use process for that alignment. Then depending on what zone district that alignment, different alignment is in, would determine whether, you know, what, whether the undergrounding overhead discussion comes into play. I mean, they are applying for overheading.
Gotcha, okay.
Does that answer?
It, it did, thank you. And I know right now we're spending a lot of time talking about costs, but there are other factors that go into our decision tonight.
We kind of got to understand that part of it because it's.
I don't, I don't.
I don't actually.
Because the costing is a distraction. We are talking about, is it compatible, how I see it is, is it compatible or not? The consequences are if they, if they're going to, like, right now, they're asking for us to go that route. They can go, they can keep the same route like this. I, I, the, the dollar figure, I think, is more of a scare tactic per se. I don't mean that negative, but it's, that's a distraction from the process. They've proposed a route, they want to go this way, they don't like the result because of the ruling and the, through the process of compatibility. Compatibility is the only thing we're talking about. Costs and routes are outside of this, this conversation. Yes, I agree with you that we have a whole lot of questions like, why are we not keeping the same route? All I hear public comment that's being said is, don't move it, is what I hear. So why would we not keep the same route or try another one that would, that doesn't even go through this, this area? But that's not part of this decision. I'd love to have that conversation, but we are restricted, is my understanding, Mary Elizabeth, that we are only here to talk about compatibility? The $10 million cost thing, that's outside of this conversation, would love to have it, but we're talking about compatibility. So I think for me, this is a simple vote for me at this point because that's, we're determining compatibility. Everything else that we have, I think we all have huge questions about is outside the scope of this. Still very, very, very important, but outside the scope of this decision to uphold or not of what planning commission did.
It's inconsistency within how the code is being upheld.
And yeah, and, and I look at the compatibility, if I heard and have read things correctly, it's to keep natural features. If you keep the same line, there's no issues with trying to keep, that, like, we keep natural features in line by not, if the line would go through the same area, there's no issues of keeping natural features. If we move the line, then it goes into keeping, it does not allow us to keep natural features, it changes. And thus, we don't have a compatibility issue.
But I, I do want to acknowledge, I appreciate the fact that they were looking at ability to move it, to not go through King's view. I, I, I want to acknowledge and appreciate that. But Erin, I'm kind of along with you, which is we're looking at consistency of the application of code and the code as it relates to our Frost plan in terms of natural beauty.
Right.
And what's there and the fact that we've never had overhead power lines at any of our CSR zone.
So it's changing that.
Right, we, we have the established, this is what we've done in the past and we're sticking to that.
And so everything else of working appropriately with Excel, working with the process for the best outcome with the community, working directly with the community inputs and all that, that's outside the scope, very, very, very important, I believe, to this group. I'm seeing a bunch of head nods, but again, just to reiterate, our decision tonight is not against any of that. It's just, is it compatible or not to have overhead lines?
Actually, Maury did.
One of their arguments, though.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, good.
Going to say it's more specific to whether or not the planning commission upheld that properly.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Amy, okay, I want to make sure we didn't cut you off. James?
Yeah, no, I, I do understand. Following what Mary Elizabeth said, my thing is, is that if we uphold the plan or the decision that was made and then we decide to go forward with it and then we go through that, they go through that process, are we putting ourselves in a situation where we could be fitting a bill like this? And, and I'm just.
There's a lot to turn down there.
Yeah.
Well, that's the reason why I asked the question, if we choose to uphold, does that mean it's the end of the conversation?
Well, can I interject for just a second, just to keep?
Sure.
What's before you guys? So I think Counselor Hansi explained it pretty well. It's, it, tonight you are looking at, did the Community Development Director, as affirmed, confirmed by the Planning Commission, properly apply the code in deciding that the lines need to be underground in order to be compatible? That, you know, did, was that proper or not? What happens next, Counselor Williams, is really not, I mean, it's, it's not part of the criteria for decision that you guys have to make.
The only reason that I, that I would even say that I thought that it would be is that it's part of the argument. It's the third argument. So I've just, it's in the packet, it's part of the argument and that's why I'm wanting to dive into it a little bit.
Sure.
I don't know if you.
No, I mean, if.
I think to answer your question, the answer is if we uphold the decision, then it doesn't mean it's the end of the conversation and immediately goes to a bill.
Sure, okay.
But I think beyond the fact it's the compatibility issue, did they also look at the code in terms of allowed, doesn't mean guaranteed? I think it's also clearly said, just because in a CSR zone, it's allowed, does not mean it's a guarantee.
Well, because of course the underground is allowed too, so.
And I just want to make some points to the Excel team, like, I, I'm kind of hitting the, we're, we are required to stay in a confined decision and that doesn't mean we're ignoring everything else you've said. It's just we are required to stay within this fine area. We'd love to have, I think we'd love to have further conversations if it's in a workshop or other type of meeting similar to that, to find a solution.
That's outside.
But, but again, well, I'm saying, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that is, but that's outside the scope of this. And so I just wanted to reiterate, like, there's a lot of great points, but we are confined to this little part and this is what we have to decide on. We'd love to talk about more, but, and get to, we're a very solution-oriented group, but a lot of the things, 99% of what's been brought up tonight, we cannot deal with tonight. And so we are confined by.
When I believe that's where Janine was really trying to go and that's kind of where I started off too. We really needed to know what box we were in because we found ourselves in the situation before where we had to do an appeal on something and it's very hard to, to know exactly what we're looking at and what we're supposed to consider as opposed to the feelings of things, what we, you know, all that other stuff. It doesn't have anything to do with it and we need to make sure that they were doing what they were supposed to do correctly. And that's, I think we were looking for those parameters. And that's why, but the way you broke it down, if that's the parameters that we're looking at, that makes it pretty cut and dry.
So any other questions, comments or?
I'm curious to see, what do you think, Rich?
Well, wait, wait just a minute, this is still like open for question. I would like for you guys to finish with your questions to staff or the applicant before you start discussing.
What does Rich have any questions? That's all right.
Ask the questions.
That's good.
I have a question, did the matter of the Trails Act ever come up during the planning commission discussions?
It was in the staff report, but it did not come up in the hearing.
Thank you.
So before we kind of bring it all internally or up here, any other questions at the moment for either staff or Excel?
I think since, I know it's not totally part of what's in front of you, but it's obviously something that's been part of the record. Is this cost difference and this, you know, possibility, not a foregone conclusion, but that, that might be something that has to be borne by the city. I think it's worth asking Excel or Excel's attorney, you know, if PUC decides that it is the city's burden, does that mean that you absolutely have to pay it? And I think that circles back to you are making a decision tonight on an application that was in front of you or, excuse me, in front, applied for and in front of the Community Development Director and the Planning Commission. And, you know, what that means all the way through at the end of the day, you know, is we, we don't know for sure, but I would ask that question of your attorney.
That was my question.
Well, and I also want to ask the reverse of that. What if PUC comes back and says that we aren't responsible for it? At that point, do they have, do they just go, well, we're not going to do the project or, is that a possibility?
So my name is Sarah Kellner and I'm outside counsel for Excel Energy and I can answer a couple of questions both relating to the PUC and relating to some of the questions I think about scope tonight. Starting with the PUC, there have been multiple instances where local jurisdictions have required public utility in these instances, it was Tri-State, to underground part of a project like this as a condition of approval or a condition of the project. In all of the instances that I am aware of, the PUC has required the local jurisdiction to not only pay for the undergrounding, but also to pay for what is required to figure out what the cost of the undergrounding is, to pay for the engineering of the undergrounding and to pay for any additional costs associated with that condition. So there are certainly preliminary estimates that we have been able to provide. But as you heard from Parker today, it is a big process to even engineer an underground line. We were boots on the ground looking at this today. There is a big hill and a big incline that needs to be made to get from across the street over that, that park area and up back to tie into the rest of the line. That is going to be a difficult underground transmission line to engineer. It is going to be costly no matter which of the options the city ultimately decides. And because Public Service Company and Tri-State are public utilities that are regulated by the Colorado PUC, the PUC has specifically found that the ratepayers of the state of Colorado cannot bear the cost of undergrounding lines like these. And so that has been a consistent approach by the PUC over many years. We've attached and cited to a lot of those cases. So I just, the reason we cited that is not to be a distraction, but just to make the council aware of what Excel is regulated as, as a public utility and how these have played out in the past. The other piece is the compatibility question that you asked. What we try to do within the materials, and I'm hopeful you guys take a look at this, is that what the code says is that something is not compatible if it cannot coexist. And that is important, that's what the code defines incompatibility as, not, you know, anything else purely can the two things coexist. So what we did try to provide was instances where overhead transmission lines like this have coexisted with all of the different uses that are within that park. As you saw, I think the pictures that were shown there was in Dillon, I think that's, am I right about that? That the other park with the disc golf course is in Dillon, so another mountain community. There are plenty of instances where things have, trails, parks have coexisted with above-ground transmission lines all over the state. And in referencing the statute, that was the purpose of referencing that statute, was that our state legislature specifically found, hey, this is a great place to have these things coexist. These transmission line corridors are good places for municipalities to put parks and to put trails and to put these types of facilities because they are compatible with one another. And so that was one of the reasons why we mentioned that and just so that the council is aware. That statute actually says if you're going to build a new transmission line, you're supposed to let the local jurisdiction know about the opportunity to, you know, have a trail coexist with.
That's not what we're talking about here.
What we're talking, those are existing uses, so the existing uses coexist with that and in fact are encouraged to coexist.
But that bill talks about if you build a transmission line, then put the park or trail or whatever underneath. What it doesn't say, if you have a park that you must be able to put transmission lines over it.
To be very clear, that's not what, it does not require that you be able to put transmission lines over parks. That's, that's absolutely correct. But what it does say is that these are two uses that are good coexisting together because we want to encourage trails, parks, open space within transmission line corridors. So that was the purpose of citing and it wasn't to say that you have to do that, that, you're correct about that.
Yes, our code also says severe impact and the, the, what can be considered are all current and existing uses. And it appears to me that that is exactly what was applied in this decision. And that the decision was that it would have severe impact had it gone as originally proposed. And they applied our code, our Copper Hands of Plan and our Frost Plan while making this decision. And that's how it, that's seems like well within their realm to do so.
Sure, and I think that it's important for this council to also understand the impact. Well, there's going to be that road that goes through that park that's going to be built as part of the new development that is going to be next to Kingsview Estates. It may be helpful for you guys to hear about, or maybe you saw up there the impact of installing the underground transmission. I mean, you have to dig those trenches as big as they are, install the, the cement around it and so.
Huge temporary inconvenience.
I mean, I'm super interested in that. I'm, I am interested in what kind of impact that has versus the other. But that actually is not what we're looking at tonight. And so that is, again, that's a planning commission purview and it's not one for us to be looking at right now. As far as I, my understanding.
It would be our position that you, as the council, can interpret your code with the facts before you, on your own.
Yes, I agree. And I, I think in that regard, it has been done accurately without have, without going down what if, kind of roads that were not discussed in the decision-making prior to it getting to us. We can't control what those conversations were, we can see what they were. Some of the conversations we maybe would have didn't, didn't happen and that's not where we discuss it. That's, this is not, that's not part.
So I would just caution right now that counsel not engage in argument with the applicant. I think definitely fair for the applicant to present fact, you know, reiterate what's in the notice of appeal and what's in the record, but please don't engage in a back and forth, thank you.
Thank you.
While you're here, thank you.
I do have a question and I hope this is appropriate. In the, in the cases where the PUC required the ratepayers to pay the difference in the underground installation, was that ever on BLM land? Any, anything that, did they, was there ever representation from another entity to bolster the idea that it wasn't just a local benefit?
In this instance, the BLM has not requested undergrounding of this line.
I'm asking in the previous instances where you said, you stated that the ratepayers have historically been required to pay the difference, was there ever representation from a federal entity such as the BLM to bolster the argument that it's not just a local benefit?
I am not remembering specifically whether the BLM intervened in either of those cases or in those a couple of cases. So I don't know the specific answer to the question. And to clarify, it was a decision that the ratepayers should not have to pay for the additional cost. It was that the local jurisdiction should, I just.
Oh, understood, got it. I think I messed that part up too, but I understand now what you're saying.
Since you brought this up, because I know this is all interconnected, has anybody of any of the other kind of patchwork of entities given approval for the line along the way?
In this instance or?
For the specific line, because I know it crosses different, you know, it's across the county, it crosses BLM. Have any of those been approved?
So as mentioned, we're working with Mesa County for the portions and unincorporated Mesa County. We've submitted an application to them and are working through that with them at the moment. We don't have that approval, but we've also not been requested to consider underground. We have submitted materials to the BLM as well for the federal authorization for the portion on BLM land. And the materials submitted for that federal authorization are for an overhead line. And they've given us no indication they're looking for underground and that is it's either. But we don't have the final approvals.
Thank you.
Without going underground, Excel covers the cost of these installations?
In our ratepayers, yes.
One more question that I have. Who oversees the, like, say you come up with, someone comes up with a final number about what the difference would actually be, who oversees that? Who is Excel accountable to when those numbers come in?
The relocation agreement, which is the form of agreement that we execute with entities. So it can be anyone from a jurisdiction such as Fruta. Sometimes we get requests from developers, you know, they want to develop on a property and push the line to a different part. That's the same form we use with every jurisdiction. And in there, it identifies how we estimate costs in the form that we do that. And then we provide a true-up to the other party of that agreement. So we oversee that and provide that true-up and explanation for the actual costs.
You fact check, you oversee the, all of that?
The company does, yeah. We have contractors who do the engineering and the installation and such, and we oversee them.
So there's, what I'm asking is there's no other entity that can verify whether that, those numbers are accurate?
In certain instances, if we have to report to the PUC, yeah, the PUC would evaluate them. But not necessarily in all instances would the PUC oversee it in any way.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff or for Excel? Okay, you're out of the hot seat for a bit. All right. I just want to go around and see if anybody has anything else they'd like to talk about or discuss. Rich?
I, I want to say in the packet, looking through the communications back and forth between city staff and Excel and just how considerate and professional and considerate all of those interactions were, like, I just appreciated how that has looked, how this has looked. I appreciate the, the process of how it has been.
Anything else?
I just, again, appreciate scope into which we have to function at this moment. I look at a bigger stepping outside of that per se, just to make some comments. You know, I think there's many other, like, it's back, to me, it's, if they, if there's certain steps that are taken, it's just per se, it's back to the drawing board to reevaluate how do we go forward? But, and I think, I think the community staff, council are all happy to have further discussions. If it be for us, like a workshop, I think we're happy to discuss that. But within the strict confines of what we're doing here, we're making that decision off of what's before us in that scope. And so I can appreciate all the conversations, all the other topics, but we are confined. Lot of really good things to solve, but that's not in our, our agenda tonight.
And as, you know, once we close this, that we were done with discussion of that for tonight.
Say that again?
Once we close this section, we're done with the, this kind of topic for tonight.
I'm just ready to make a motion.
Then we have three options available to us.
I move to affirm the planning commission's decision to approve the administration decision that transmission lines must be underground within the Riverfront Park. This would keep the planning commission's original decision to underground the transmission line in the CSR zone.
You have a first?
Second.
Can I, I, I'd like to, Counselor Williams, actually, if you could just consider an amendment to your motion, that should reflect that the undergrounding is to make it compatible with the Riverfront Park.
So moved.
We need to read an amended second.
So second that part?
Second.
All right. You have a second?
amended second.
All right. Any other questions or comments before we take a vote? All right, seeing none, Deb?
Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Counselor Downs? Counselor Miller? Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
And Counselor Perser? Motion passes six zero.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, Excel, for being here and having, and working through us, working with us through these conversations. That closes our administrative agenda. Next up, we have the city manager's report, our interim city manager's report.
Can I make a request, Mayor, for a bio break, please?
Yes, it is. Well, I appreciate the fact it's now called a bio break. The time is nine sixteen. Let's do a 10-minute bio break. We'll return at nine twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is nine.
Oh, did you just gavel?
I just gavel. The time is nine.
Voice.
Not the judge, dude.
Didn't work.
All right, everybody, the time is now nine twenty six and we are back. Uh, thank you, everybody. Um, now it's time for us to move to section nine, the city manager's report, or should be the city interim city manager's report. Shannon, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Um, I also wanted to just take a quick second to thank everyone for their public comments, uh, tonight, especially on the Save Fruit of Farms. Um, we had a few people speak about the Save Fruit of Farms. This is something that council has been hearing a lot about recently, so um, we decided that we want to draft a response, uh, to some of the things that we're hearing and actually a local news station, um, reached out to us about a story they were doing, um, this morning, so we sent over a response to them and we're going to post this on our website tomorrow. But with everything that's going on and a lot of the information that's being communicated out there, we just want to put everything in one place to hopefully help with, uh, some of these concerns about taking farms or any sort of, uh, illegal right-of-way acquisition because none of those things are currently occurring. So I'm going to read this statement in full if that's okay with the city council, but we're also going to post on our website and we provide it to them as well.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, so it is a little long, so I apologize, although I've never been known to be brief, as you all know. So, uh, it starts off, so any claims about the city unlawfully inquiring farms are false. When the city purchased right-of-way, it is generally for the purposes of expanding a road. The city only acquires right-of-way that is necessary for the project, which includes road expansion and the installation of utilities. The city only purchased the amount of land necessary for road expansion and utility installation, not full parcels. Again, really want to emphasize, we do not acquire full parcels. Um, and it's required, as the city, we are required to follow the statutory and other applicable processes to do so, which includes negotiating with landowners to reach an agreement for the purchase at fair market value of the property needed for the right-of-way. The city has been acquiring the needed right-of-way dedication from subdivisions along Nineteen Road. Uh, the expansion of Nineteen Road is a three-lane road with pedestrian bicycle facilities. Development occurring along Nineteen Roads, the car out department transportation is requiring that fruit to make improvements in the intersection of Nineteen and Highway six and fifty. Subdivisions various traffic studies have also required turn lanes and Iron Drive and Skiff Avenue in response to development occurring in the area and the city is expanding Nineteen Road to accommodate transportation and traffic flow needs. The city does extensive community outreach for all long-term and short-term planning documents, which are the leading documents that help the city make decisions. For example, in community surveys over the last several years, residents identify the quality of city streets and the overall traffic flow and congestion management as the two top priorities the city should focus on. With this input, the city invests most of its capital resources on transportation and circulation. In addition to the community survey results, the expansion of Nineteen Road has been identified as priority for many years, several years of planning go into these road projects. The details and construction updates about Nineteen Road specifically have been shared and communicated to residents in the community for over a year using different channels of communication, including mailers, the city of fruit's website, social media partners, the media and more. In addition, the city of fruit held two open houses regarding the Nineteen Road project on July seventeen, twenty twenty four, October third, twenty twenty four. During these meetings, staff listened to community input and made changes to design based upon this feedback. Uh, the city just prevailed in a lawsuit entitled Schultz for City of Fruit of Mesa County District Court Case Number, uh, twenty-four CB six-two. In that case, the plaintiff claimed that the city's road classification in Nineteen Road, J Road, J point two and J six roads were unlawful and the city was unlawfully moving forward to take private property with road expansion projects. The city prevailed in having the lawsuit fully dismissed and the city was awarded its attorney fees for the same, which have been paid in full. Pursuant to state statute, the city cannot institute court proceedings until it has failed to reach an agreement with the landowner for the purchase of the necessary right-of-way. With regards, uh, to the Beddoes Farm, the amount of land the city needs to acquire as necessary is only a total of six thousand square feet or point one four acres. The majority of this small piece of land is already burned by a platted multipurpose easement dedicated to Mesa County for utility purposes. City encourages, uh, the public to visit its website, fruit.org dot growth to learn more about growth and development and for any updates, uh, to fruita.org nineteen road. We hope this information is helpful in our state and city's process when it comes to right-of-way and acquisition in the Nineteen Road project. City of fruit's number one priority is operating transparent local government serves the community to its full ability each and every day. So we will post that tomorrow. I'm not sure if there's any, um, thing that came out from the interview request today. We haven't heard anything yet. Um, but there's a lot of information going around. We hope that this helps with some of it, but you know, we can discuss in the future as well. Um, other than that, no other updates to report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Shannon. Uh, with that, council reports in action. Anybody like to go first?
Sure. Um, I got to once again join the Fruit of Action Council, um, last night and I keep it's only the second time I've gotten to be with them, but as I said last time, they're just so full of ideas and volley volunteering energy and they just cannot their meetings are scheduled from six thirty to eight and unlike us, they only meet for half an hour, even though it's scheduled for an hour and a half. Um, they're very quick and efficient. Um, but we're efficient. We are also very efficient. It's just that they, they, they just talk, talk fast. Uh, you know, they're, they're younger. So it's just so great to see that energy and their engagement in the community and making you know, their contribution and difference to fruit. It's just really great to get to be a part of that, um, group and super proud of them and they, um, at some time in the near future want to come back and speak to us like they did um, last spring, so I let them know that we definitely love that, so that that highly encourage them to think about that, so they probably will be visiting us soon. So there's that, um, report. I did have I'm a question, which is one sixty-nine North Mulberry is gonna be an Italian restaurant now, we know. Um, the parking there um, is still fruit as parking? Can I get clarification on that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that the sale of that did not, um, take away that.
Is that, is there signage that way so that people realize it's not just for the restaurant? Yeah, cuz it, that, it does seem like it could be misconstrued as just the restaurant's parking.
Like Fiesta Guadalajara.
But no, for real, that because we
We got batteries.
Real, that was a big deal about getting that parking.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a big deal. Uh, Dan Karris, Planning Director for the City of Frida. We do have Matt working on the signage for the parking lot and uh, yes, it is going to be public. Uh, remember the terms of that deal is that it has to remain public for at least five years, or if they relocate that along the block face with a with the specific number of, I think it was twenty-five or thirty parking stalls. They are doing a property line adjustment right now to encompass that entire parking lot because it does kind of encroach into the sidewalk onto the buildings to get the actual property lines to match up. Uh, and that was a part of the sale and no changes were made to the parking or redevelopment agreement.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Anything else?
No.
For now.
Couple things like, um, as we move to this new tourism, uh, group, are we going to when we see their new advertising, are we going to see a bigger variety of businesses being, um, displayed in those advertisements? Because it seems like the last year it's been very narrow to a handful of businesses and we have a lot more than that of local businesses.
Can I speak to that? Because right after this council approved the contract with Barnhart, uh, the Tourism Advisory Council met with them. There was discussion and began the process of trying to give them sufficient information and guidance as to what the council wanted them to do uh, relative to going forward into the new year. So there's been, um, questions designed. Uh, they had questions for us as a council. Council members are in the process of providing answers and we'll be meeting with them after the first of the year.
Yes, councilman, who's?
The advise, the tourism advisory. Not.
To meet with. Like, I'll happily answer.
Actually did answer some questions. Was that, was I the only?
Yes. So as part of their, um, we'll have, do you want to answer this, Sarah? Okay, um, as part of their planning, um, they've met with a small group of stakeholders individually, so it was ten total. Um, so there were, uh, representative from our public lands, but also our local business, some council members, some of our tourism advisory councils. So right now they're really focused on, um, outreach and really learning from the community and how to best, uh, prioritize, um, their efforts. Sierra, do you want to add anything else to the stakeholder list?
My recommendations was that, um, that more businesses be included in, you know, in our, in our marketing and
Yeah, I would have really liked to have been involved with that.
Yeah, did how did they decide the ten?
Um, they decided the ten, uh, staff made a recommendation to speak with, um, ten stakeholders within the community and we've really tried to diversify who they were talking to. Um, so whether that's local businesses, the chamber, um, they talked to the Colorado Canyons Association, so trying to get various different angles, community members, um, to get their input on what they would like to see the city work on for tourism. So they had, that was one part of the overall discovery process. Um, and they'll be back in January to continue that process as well with the, with the board.
There's interest from other groups or parties that would like to talk with them and kind of provide input. Is there a means to do so?
Um, yes, of course, you know, anytime, like you can, of course, reach out to staff and we'll get, provide that input both to Barnhart, but also the F-TAC. Um, but the F-TAC, Fruit of Tourism Advisory Council meets every fourth Thursday and the public is welcome to come and speak during those meetings as well and provide input. Um, so yeah, those are both great opportunities and I can provide more information on the discovery process as we continue on into the new year with Barnhart.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That would be appreciated.
Okay.
Um, couple other points. I think, I don't know, I hope this is okay. Tell me if I'm out of line there. Um, you know, there's been a lot of talk with due to Nineteen Road and, um, you know, I just want to make some statements.
We are, okay, I just
They're just general, not
Because we're going to be going into executive.
That's why I'm saying it now and not in session. Um, two things, one is, you know, part of our responsibilities are looking out for the rights of property owners. Sometimes we'd like them to happen, sometimes we don't. Um, I live in a particular place, um, where I am seeing a bit of what folks are seeing on Nineteen Road. I bought a property knowing that it could be developed behind me and now I have a hundred and fifty units or something like that going around me. I'm not necessarily a fan of it, but hey, those people have the property rights behind me that they can develop how they would see fit if they want to leave it ag or if they want to develop it. I would love to see it ag. I loved it when it was leased to some guys having cows on it, even though the cows came through my property and, uh, left, uh, residue behind. But, um, because that's one thing that I really love about fruit is smelling the cow poop. All right, not the chicken stuff when the wind's the wrong direction, but you know, and then also on the front of my house, I've I've lost a couple feet due to how things have worked out and I've not been compensated at all. Um, and so like if, if there's anybody that you talk to that needs, like, I'm a, I'm a real example of it as well that folks can talk to because, um, sometimes growth is hard, but hey, I, I've got to support property rights, uh, that people have, love it or hate it. If it's within the allowable uses. There it is. So, um, that's it.
Okay. James. You sure?
Just, I'm okay.
All right. Amy.
Um, I, we had our first historic preservation, uh, meeting of the year and man, I just love that group. They're so fun and they have some really even bigger goals. Um, the chamber is going to come present to us. They want to be more involved in helping to fundraise uh, for some of our bigger projects, which is super exciting because there's some, some really big fun things that we've had uh, on our list for since I, so the last three years at least, I think probably much longer than that. Um, so really excited about that. Those conversations will be happening next month, so stay tuned. Yeah, and I think that was all. Yeah.
All right. Remember, a certain day back in the summertime when I had this big idea to present a, a proposal to OEDIT for the Colorado Creative Industries Summit that included our council being representation of what a creative council is. Well, they accepted it. Um, and so I would just want to invite everyone and anyone on council that would like to be a part of that. Um, the, it will be May first or second. The summit is both days and I have no clue when our panel would be. Um, but anyone that wants to, has a desire to be part of that, I think it will be really interesting and fun. Um, and it, I did, I did propose it in a way that's like elect an artist, but I also meant you guys work with the creatives and you work with creatives in the community and we approach things in a different type of way. And so I think the idea about creativity and municipal responsibility is going to be a really interesting.
Where is this?
It'll be in Grand Junction, which is so cool. I don't know where, because it's close.
What email out, what you've all done and the information that you received and the dates and all that, send us out an email. That'd be
Actually, you may have a lot of volunteers.
Yeah, good. Yay. The more the merrier. That'd be awesome. Um, I think that's it. I do want to see if we can, uh, reopen the discussion on creative district application at some point. I know we have other fish to fry right now, but maybe in the springtime or
It's kind of like May-ish?
May-ish.
No, that was
April, April, May, something like that. I think because we never reached a consensus and it's no rush, but yeah.
All right, so I see Deb making a note. So thank you. Congratulations. Anything else?
Nothing else other than what I've already presented.
Um, I've got a couple of things. Uh, we as council have a busy week this week. Um, yes, uh, going through the city manager hiring process or interviewing and decision-making process. Um, I do want to kind of call out publicly, uh, Katie, Ciara and Odette um, for all the additional work that they've put in trying to make this happen. It's been a lot of behind the scenes. Uh, effort to kind of pull this together along with our consultant, of course, but I just want to acknowledge that. So thank you. It's, it's greatly, greatly appreciated.
As well as our mayor has put in a lot.
You kind of reminded me of this. Have we heard back from CML? So we submitted to be, um, presenters at two, uh, sessions and I don't, I was just curious if we had heard back.
Uh, we received one email that one of the sessions was not approved. We haven't received an email on the second session or which session wasn't approved. We reached out. Uh, it seems like it's just a standard response. Your session was not approved. We received several competitive, uh, session, um, uh, recommendations. So I think we're still waiting to hear back on the second one.
We just don't know which one.
Yeah, and there was no description at all, so that was we were trying, we were scratching our heads when we got it, but one of them has not been approved.
All right.
As much as I know.
Is there a way to follow up on that?
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah.
That'd be great. So we know which PowerPoint and presentation is working on now. Um, the chamber, uh, MOU is now official, official, all parties have signed. So that's done. And then just, uh, so you guys are aware, uh, I've had a couple of conversations with the Colorado Israel Chamber of Commerce. Um, they've also talked to GJAP, Business Incubator and the university. So I'm just kind of got looped into some of those conversations kind of at the tail end. There's no action or anything at this point. Just want to let you guys know that they reached out and we'll see what happens. So, and that's it for me. Anybody else? Janine? Okay.
I want to say thank you to Mark and his team for getting the dog park fixed.
Thank you, Mark. Oh, all right. Uh, if nothing else, um, I need a motion to convene in executive session.
I move to convene an executive session pursuant to CRS section twenty-four dash six, four oh two, four B for the purpose of receiving legal advice from the city attorney and pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, four E for developing strategy for negotiations and informing negotiators with regard to the Nineteen Road project.
Right. So we'll go ahead and do that and just so everybody's aware, it will be council, interim city manager, uh, planning director and our attorney. So with, pardon me? Okay, we have a first and a second.
So, um, you said Steve and Steve Martin.
Oh, okay. All right. Let me add you to my notes, Steve.
Counselor Downs.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Hanty. Counselor Purser.
Yes.
Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Right, thank you, uh, Deb.